I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to your presentations, tab two, various chamber of commerce update with Mr. Berry.
Good afternoon, council. It is Scott Berry, Executive Director of the Taveras Chamber of Commerce. Just to give you my monthly update, we are still gaining new members even during this time. We had four in the month of August, which is a low number, but for the month of August, it's actually staying, but it's actually right on what we've done the last two Augusts, Augusts in a row. Also, as you know, there is a wonderful membership assistance program that the city is doing, offering our smaller members half-price renewals of their membership. And in the month of August, we had 14. Take advantage of that. So that is great. That is a program that's working and is helping us to retain our members. We continue to be open limited hours, Tuesday through Thursday, 10 to 4. One thing I do want to update you on, and everybody that can hear this, is the CARES Act funding, the CARES Act money, which is now available. The application is open. You can actually apply on the taveraschamber.com website. We'll take you directly to the link. Currently, it is for businesses that were considered nonessential or forced to close. That is going to be being removed within the next week to two weeks, and it will be open for any business who had negative financial impact due to COVID-19. There are many that were classified as central businesses who were fine the first few months, but now are starting to see slack, and starting to see reduction, and having financial obstacles. And so that is why it has been opened up. There's still money available, there are still spots available. And as of this morning, I spoke to the leaders of that at the county level, and that should be available within the week to 10 days, depending on how it takes to redo the application with on the IT side. Any questions on that? Okay. Then, the other thing I just want to make sure you know, we are doing several events. Back again, our business app for hours, because it's a hard event, Social Distance Act, we are still not doing, but we are doing our networking lunch this month at Fish Camp, Lake Eustis, on the 15th of September. And on the 23rd, we are doing our monthly luncheon. That will be a pavilion on the lake. It is limited to 50. If you wish to attend, please do RSVP. It's going to be sponsored by one of our newest members, Immunity Help Spa. They were literally at the first, that the luncheon is last month, and the hospital's normally the September sponsor. The hospital is not doing in-person events, so they let me know they couldn't do it. So I said, "It's available." And they literally, their first meeting, said, "We want to do it." So yay, so it'll be good. And we're working on a speaker that will have to do with health and wellness, that will tie in with what that business is. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
Which brings us to a story by City Attorney, Mr. Lord of Expertate Communications and Sports.
Thank you, Mayor. If anyone in the audience wishes to be heard on any quasi judicial matters, will need to be sworn in, that would be agenda item six through nine.
Use the microphone. Microphone.
The audience is going to speak on this topic. I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me. Let's do that again, how about that? If anyone in the audience wishes to be heard today on quasi judicial matters, you need to be sworn in, that would be tab number six through nine. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Pardon me.
Thank you. Counsel, if anyone has had any expertise communications, now would be a perfect time to disclose.
We've had many discussions, including, well, council on comprehensive plan update. So, not to speak for everyone else, but I know we've discussed it in multiple meetings and multiple years, so.
It's just tab six is the only one.
Okay. I would say I don't think the others require. It's a special, thank you, Mayor. Which brings us to reading all ordinances, resolutions of the record. Ms. Oden.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one resolution and one ordinance, Resolution 2020-21, a resolution of the City of Taveras, Florida, and meeting Resolution 2020-06, FEMA public assistance, authorizing CARES Act funding as a recipient with Lake County, Florida, and authorizing the city administrator to execute documents related to CARES Act funding for the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, providing for conflict sustainability and an effective date. Ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance of the City of Taveras, amending the City of Taveras Comprehensive Plan in its entirety pursuant to Florida statutes, Chapter 163, providing for adoption of the City of Taveras Comprehensive Plan 2040, including amendments to the future land use element and the future land use map 2020-20. The housing element, the conservation element, the transportation element, the public facilities element, the capital improvements elements, the concurrency element, and intergovernmental total coordination element, providing for creation of a recreation and open space element, inclusive of all associated tables, exhibits, and maps, providing for the repeal of ordinances inconsistent with the ordinance, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to fully take from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to resolutions, tab five. Approval of Resolution 2020-21, amending Resolution 2020-06, authorizing federal assistance for the COVID-19 pandemic to include CARES Act funding.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Oden.
This is, this resolution amends, as we stated, amends Resolution 2020-06 and provides for authorization of CARES Act funding. And some of the background on the side is, on March 13th of this year, the president declared a state of emergency for the coronavirus, as known as COVID-19. The incident period began January 2020, but the ending date for the disaster has not yet been determined. The City of Taveras hasn't heard eligible cause related to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency. And on April 1st, 2020, this council adopted Resolution 2020-06, providing authorization for the city administrator to make application for federal public assistance for COVID-19 pandemic, also known as disaster 4486, Resolution 2020-6. This provided authorization to execute all agreements, contracts, and any documents relating to the application for federal public assistance. In addition to FEMA disaster assistance in the state of Florida, has received federal CARES Act funding and has allocated funds to Florida counties for all full expenditures related to the pandemic. Each county may allocate funds to municipalities within their jurisdiction. Municipalities receiving allocations for the CARES Act funding will be deemed as subrecipients for federal grant reporting. The City of Taveras hasn't heard eligible cause related to COVID-19 pandemic emergency, and therefore Resolution 2020-20 provides expanded authorization to include CARES Act funding in addition to FEMA disaster funding for eligible expenditures. This resolution is required under the federal disaster grant requirements. The options before you is move to approve Resolution 2020-21, authorizing the city administrator to apply for CARES Act funding applications from Lake County, Florida as a subrecipient for eligible COVID-19 pandemic expenditures, and to execute all documents related to and required by the application for CARES Act subrecipient from Lake County, Florida. Or option to move not to approve, staff recommends to approve the Resolution 2020-21. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. And if we didn't have a question from the audience? Anyone from the public want to speak on this topic? I'm going to close, public input, canceled. Do you have any questions from Ms. Oden? Just to be clear, this allows us to apply for a second act to get funded from the government government.
Correct.
Okay. So, do you have a motion or apply? I have a question. What kind of items can we be associated?
Past items like our sanitation, hand sprays, masks, things of that nature. And then future items that are related to COVID. So, for example, if we are going to have virtual meetings during a future pandemic, some of that video equipment that's necessary to hold virtual meetings during a pandemic would be eligible. So we'll put a package together of things we've spent and things that would assist us in future pandemics. That goes to the county, that goes to the state of Florida, they go through the list, and they say either eligible or ineligible. So that's the kind of stuff that's available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve. I have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to the Transmittling, tab six, ordinance 2020-10, Comprehensive Plan Update 2040. Can you add this up?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to get the presentation. Florida growth management legislation requires local governments to maintain a comprehensive plan that provides the policy foundation for local planning and land use facilities. Comprehensive plan presents a vision for the future with long-range goals and objectives that affect local government. Included in the comprehensive plan are elements pertaining to future land use, transportation, housing, recreation in open space, public facilities, capital improvements, conservation, and intergovernmental coordination. City council directed staff to complete the process of updating the City of Taveras Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, and on December 5th, 2018, approved the scope of services of Kimley Horn Consulting Firm to assist staff in completing this task that was estimated to take approximately two years. The process included hosting multiple visioning workshops, providing the public and the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which was made up of city and county stakeholders, the opportunity to express ideas about the future of Taveras, and to provide input and feedback on draft elements and key issues. Ordinance 2020-10 proposes the adoption of a new comprehensive plan. It's entitled Taking Flight Comprehensive Plan 2040, and it replaces in its entirety the city's Comprehensive Plan 2020 adopted on June 6th, 2001. What council will be voting on tonight is whether or not to move to approve the transmittal of ordinance 2020-10 and the proposed comprehensive plan to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for Review. And once they've had an opportunity to comment, the comprehensive plan will come back to city council for final adoption. At their July 16th, 2020 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board, acting as the land planning agency, voted unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance 2020-10, and staff recommends that the city council moves to approve the transmittal ordinance 2020-10 to the state for review. At this time, I'd like to invite representatives from Kimley Horn to give a brief presentation of the changes that we've made to the comprehensive plan. Mr. Kelly Clepper, Mike Votto, and James Taylor, and I'll turn it over to them.
I just want to add one thing, just to be clear. Today, it's about transmitting the plan to the state to receive their comments.
That's correct.
Those comments will come back to the city council, along with the planning and zoning comments, along with the committee that you put together to review the comp plan and the LDRs, along with staff's comments, along with the public. So the goal is to get all the comments of the plan back to you at an upcoming meeting, so that you can take all those comments and make any changes you need to make. I just wanted clarity that today was the transmittal. And you said it, I just wanted to punctuate it. All right, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. For the record, Kelly Clepper with Kimley Horn, and as Mike said, with me is Mr. Mike Votto and Mr. James Taylor. Just want to have a very brief presentation, more opportunity for you all to ask questions, because I know there's a pretty lengthy review process. So, if we can go ahead and move to the next slide. So, what we like to do is basically just introduce what were the goals of the plan from the outset. Working with staff, it was, take a look at our current comprehensive plan and basically come up with recommendations. How can we simplify it? How can we reorganize it? We realize that it's kind of been band-aided over the last couple of years, so how can we make it function more truly like a comprehensive plan versus individual segments? So, that was the first thing. The other thing was to look at the plan from a regulatory standpoint. Comprehensive plan should not have Land Development Code regulations, and your plan actually did. DEO, as well as the state statute acts, says this is not the place for it. Move those into your zoning code, your land development code. Incorporate the references from other city plans, and then the overarching question is what does the city want to be over the next 10, 20, 40 years? So, a lot of those questions are answered or addressed in this comprehensive plan update. So there again, what we've talked about is kind of what is the overarching reason why we do some of this? You have to do this every seven years as adopted, the schedule's actually adopted by DEO. I will say that you're actually one year ahead of that adoption schedule, which is always a good thing, because a lot of communities are behind schedule, at which point you cannot address, you're actually here, any land use or comprehensive plan changes until your entire comp plan is updated. So, kudos to this council, as well as the staff for moving that process ahead. Now, the comprehensive plan is a series of, I'll say, internal documents. Here's what we call the goals, objectives, policies. That's kind of where the rubber meets the road of the comp plan itself. That's where you're saying, this is what we want to do, this is how we're going to do it, and this is what we're going to do moving forward. There's what's called a data inventory and analysis, and that's all of that analysis that we have to do to basically formulate and inform the policies themselves. We also have a series of maps, and one of the extra documents that we, Kimley Horn, like to do is kind of that roadmap, where we identify, especially when we're undertaking such an extensive review, is to say, you know, here was all of your previous comprehensive plan policies, and here's the disposition of those. We forward that along with the comp plan up to DEO, so everybody understands, if there was a future land use policy for this, it's either been amended, deleted, or it's now this new number. So it's easier to understand if we're moving forward. And there again, what is not, it's not your land development code. So where are we in the process? We're in the last little bit of this. Excuse me. As the city administrator said, this is the transmittal here, and the state and all the review agencies, including Lake County, have a period of time to provide comments. I will tell you that there are zero comp plans to come back with no comments. There's either formal or some technical assistance comments, but there's always some level of comments. We get that in the form of what's called an report, objections, recommendations, and comments. We sit down to work with staff, identify what we need to change, what's advisory, and then move forward from there. So in about 60 days, plus or minus, we should be back in front of you, depending on how this gets scheduled. So what are the plan highlights? Just to kind of give you a quick overview, then we'll kind of dive into each of the elements. First and foremost, we addressed a lot of the changes that have occurred since the last comp plan was adopted with respect to the Florida statutes. There were 200 different changes that occurred. Some of those have been as simple as definitional types of changes or references to military bases, but nonetheless, it's one of those things you have to go through and identify, does your comprehensive plan adhere to those components? We looked at consolidating and reorganizing. What we looked at was there were policies and different elements that did the same thing, but were in a different section. So we said, let's move, if it's a transportation-related policy, let's actually put it in transportation. Let's not have it in three different sections. We updated the future land use categories. This is an important thing to remember, is we increased the range of density and housing options available to the city. We didn't take things away, we created more options. Same thing with mobility and transportation. We're addressing all modes of transportation, whether or not it's vehicle, which is of course the primary course that we take right now, all the way through bicycle, pedestrian, and those alternative modes, also with the recognition of your airport. Then also, one of the more important things is there is the addition of the recreation and open space element. That's something that you did not have previously, so, you know, working with staff, there's a new element, and then just the overall layout and design, as Mike said, you know, taking flight. Taking that play on words, especially with the seaplane base, and the way that you're forward-thinking, it just made sense. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and James, they're going to start through portions of the elements, and then I'll bring it back to the very end.
Great, thank you. Again, to Eric and Mike Votto, Kimley Horn, Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here today, so we're going to dive right into the land use element, which is kind of the crux that drives the rest of the plan. And so, a couple of highlights of what we did in coordination with staff and with input from the public, so we, one of the major things we did is we consolidated some of the future land use categories that were in your previous plan. So, for example, there was a suburban expansion category, that was rolled into the low-density category. Similarly, there was a moderate and medium. They're very close in that intent, so in order to simplify the plan, we moved forward and we combined those, so now you just have the medium-density category in opposition to having those two. Likewise, there was the mixed-use neighborhood, the mixed-use commercial categories, and after much of discussion, it made sense to make those just one mixed-use category for simplicity and ease of implementation and clarity for both the city and for the development community. We added a category, the residential estate category, which is for single-family homes up to one dwelling in per acre. That was a category that was not previously in the plan, but is something in the city's toolbox now, whether that be by annexation, but it's another, it's another category at the city's disposal. We also clarified some of the annexation policies that's located in its own objective within this element, again, to provide additional clarity on what we heard was an important topic throughout this process. And like Kelly mentioned at the beginning, we wanted to incorporate other planning activities that the city had undertaken since the last comprehensive plan, so that would be the downtown master plan, the city's economic development strategy, and the seaplane-based master plan. So we looked at all of those things and integrated them into, throughout the plan, in the land use element and within other elements as well. And here's a table that you likely saw in your review of the draft plan, so this is the table of the development standards for the various land use categories on your future land use map. So that's reflecting each of the categories, their allowable densities and non-residential intensities. So with that, we'll pass it over to Eugenius to talk a little bit about transportation and mobility.
Good afternoon. So as Kelly was mentioning, a lot of things in your comprehensive plan weren't updated to the latest Florida statutes, and that was a big goal of what we did with the transportation element. We started out with a name change foremost, to transportation and mobility. Mobility is kind of a buzzword that's been out there, there's a lot of best practices that's been written on it, it's kind of a recognition that the city could use some flexibility with thinking about how people move around. Typically, a lot of comprehensive plans in the past have been very automobile-centric. This is more a recommendation of, you know, getting with the latest statutes language, getting with the latest best practices, but more than anything, it provides flexibility to the city to be able to address the ways that people move around, if it's not in the automobile, or bicycle, or golf cart, and sidewalks, all these things are solutions that the city, to add more tools into the toolbox. The focus on mobility came about with the inclusion of some things that will be more concrete in your land development code. This is a visioning document, it opens the door to those sorts of things that you can incorporate to your land development code. One of the things that we did incorporate directly into the comprehensive development was the addition of this idea of level of service, not just on the roadway, but also on the sidewalk, also with the transit system, and also with the bikes and beds. And we learned a lot from your community meetings, that your residents are really passionate about getting out in the nature and enjoying these trails. We wanted to make sure that that was recognized as part of this visioning document to promote those trails, those golf cart accessibility areas that folks love. So with that recognition between the mobility and the land use, as Mike just introduced, these two things go together, and we want to make sure that it's in your vision that one doesn't happen without the other, the land use and transportation are really tied together. The staff did a remarkable job back in 2017 with this downtown Taveras master plan. That also needed to be incorporated into your comprehensive plan to start adding some of those things in your land development code that aren't there already. So again, we're talking about flexibility, we're talking about opening the doors to a lot of good ideas that are now in your comprehensive plan that haven't been in your past. Well, so we talked about the trails, so Hyatt Trail and those other scenic highway designations, we wanted to make sure that those were recognized in the comprehensive plan. And the seaplane base, of course, is an integral part of your system, it's transportation as well, so there's a lot of policies that have incorporated along those lines as well.
So, we'll back back here, we'll write down a line here, so the housing element. This element of the comprehensive plan is intended to have, include the goals, objectives, and policies. In this case, wanted to show that the city's providing a variety of housing options throughout the city, housing times, housing options for both your existing residents and to attract future residents. There is policies included as far as attainable housing, so for example, supporting for when you do update your land development regulations, considering flexible regulations to attract that type of housing, or to forward the process in a more streamlined fashion, should the city choose to go that route. Same thing, considering incentives, and so on and so forth. So, those things aren't defined in the plan, but like James said, with transportation, we're setting the stage for you to implement those things as you update your code. The housing element also talks about preservation of your existing housing stock and recognizing historic elements that you have here in the city too. And also addresses on coordination with the county and others on housing programs that are available here in the community. The next element, oh, facilities element. So this addresses water, wastewater, solid waste, stormwater drainage. And so, the objective of this goal is to maximize the use of your existing facilities, and then plan for current future demand on those systems. There's a specific new objective and related policies that support the city undertaking an updated stormwater master plan. That was something that we heard throughout the process, that was something that the city desires to undertake in the coming years here, so there's a specific policy in the comprehensive plan supporting that. A lot of these things also relate to land use and conservation, so we made sure that those links were made in the policy language. And then there's your 10-year water supply facilities work plan. So, there's a specific policy in this element that states that the city will undertake a new 10-year water supply facilities work plan. So, by state statute, once St. John's River Water Management District, once they update their regional water supply plan, the city and the utilities department has 18 months to update the city's plan. So, in our conversation with the water management district, I think it's supposed to go out for a public comment in December with an anticipated adoption in May of 2020, so we wanted to share that with you all, so that's on your radars. Next, the conservation element. Another thing that was expressed to us throughout the process from the public is the recognition and the appreciation for the city's natural qualities, so there's specific policy language in this element that's meant to conserve, protect, manage, and restore the city's natural resources. Like Kelly mentioned at the beginning, a lot of this exercise was reorganizing and making some things clearer, so each of the objectives in the conservation element are related to air quality, water quality, hazardous waste, so on and so forth. So, that's been a lot more streamlined, simplified, and it also has policy language that supports your existing ordinances on shoreline protection, floodplain management, so on and so forth. So that, we're about to kind of...
So, a few more slides, and then we'll be able to start talking through some questions. But, one of the things that you first talked about is, you know, referencing those existing policies and plans that the city already has in place, and also recommending new things, such as, in the case of the recreation and open space element, Parks Master Plan. And literally what that is, is basically taking what we've identified and prepared in coordination with staff as part of the comprehensive plan, is taking it and creating almost like the land development code version above of Parks. Now, you may start saying, well, why do we want to do some of these plans? And, you know, Mr. Dillon can opine on to this as well, but, you know, when you're going and seeing grants, one of the first things we're going to be looking at is, do you have a master plan? Is it in your comprehensive plan? And that's where you start getting a lot of your points.
And that's where you start getting a lot of your points towards achieving those certain awards. The other thing is you start identifying those specific projects instead of saying, well, we'd like to do this. It's like, no, we've identified this in not only our comprehensive plan, but also our parks master plan for this project. Here's the reason why, and the justification for it, including the financial impacts of it. So that's one of the reasons there. Again, this element came about, it's actually required, you didn't have one, so we made sure to get you into compliance at this point. But kind of like what we've been talking about, there are certain things that support other elements. So there again, the cross-references between economic development and land use and some of those infrastructure components, but with a more narrowly focused component of recreation and open space. So then we get to intergovernmental coordination. And this is basically an identification and the requirements of who you're going to work with as implementing city programs, policies, the plan. And that's everything from the county to, you know, whoever at that point, DEP, the Water Management District, DOT, you know, all of those entities. And basically saying, we recognize that there's a relationship between these organizations and we're going to continue to work with them or we will be working with them for the betterment of the city. That's the information that's included within this specific element. Capital improvements. I know this is a very important one because this is where you're basically saying, these are the projects that we want to do as a city over the next, I'll say, called the life of that specific CIP. All your projects, whether it's roadways, stormwater, solid waste, parks, you name it, all are included in that and it's incorporated into your comprehensive plan. Now, one thing I do want to say is that, you know, you do, as you are adopting and amending your capital improvements plan every year, you do need to make, I'll say, a brief amendment to your comprehensive plan. But the state does not recognize that as a full-blown amendment. It's basically recognized, you go through the process, and they basically check it off at that point to acknowledge that you have done that component. So there again, this is where you're starting to literally lay out it with the next five here, so that short-term vision as well as the long-term vision for the projects and how you're going to fund those and the funding sources. So what are the next steps? So we're here tonight asking for the recommendation of this body to transmit to the state. We go through a specific process. We say, you know, anticipated comments back within 60 days because there's some interim steps that the city does, where there's transmitting up, acknowledgement by the state, culminating all of the comments back. And then, there again, we come back with a series of recommendations, as the city administrator noted, with any updates, amendments, and also responses to those comments. Now, this looks like it's been pretty seamless for a lot of people. I will tell you that there has been a tremendous amount of work by city staff. You know, when you start thinking about the work, especially Mike and Antonio, the hours they put in, and then Dylan, and then, you know, everybody that has put in the time. There's a reason the document is, we think, is an extremely good document. And it's because of the folks that you all have hired to represent your city. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have specific to any one of the elements or the comprehensive plan in general.
Just one more comment. Once the comprehensive plan gets through its entire process, another couple of months, the next thing we need to do is update our land development codes to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it is at that point where you'll see all those changes start to occur with anyone who wants to build a building or a commercial kind of thing as well. So that'll be after the comp plan is adopted. Back to you, Mayor.
Have we received any requests from the audience? Is anyone in the audience, Mr. Yocum, would you like to come forward and answer questions? Please, you'll read three minutes.
Thanks.
Please state your name and address.
Manchiyukam, 12619 Milwaukee. I've been to several of these meetings, I've watched the process. And my main observation as a taxpayer advocate and a fiscal watchdog is that I didn't ever see any kind of discussion about how much each of these new elements would cost. You know, when you talk about, well, we're increasing the level of service, so we include, whether it's trails or walkways or other things, there hasn't been anything that I've seen, maybe I missed a meeting, but that said, okay, when we add this, this is going to add an extra $100,000 per month or per block for the cost of doing this. Because when you put in the level of service, and then, as you well know, then later you come to budget and say, well, we want to maintain the level of service. And you, once you pass this, you've agreed in the plans that it's going to come to you with a budget that, if I'm right, is that all of a sudden you got all these extra want issues added to the budget and to your plans. And yet, there's not been any discussion that I've seen by any of you or the planning and zoning discussing, okay, when we add this, how much is it going to cost us in the future and every year and the maintenance and so forth? And I just, you know, government is just getting to the point where, you know, and you guys, you aren't going back to the rollback rate. And this is one other reason why, is that you keep adding costs and burying them in levels of service. And I just think that I need, I wanted to say that so it's on the record, that I don't think you've been very fiscally conservative in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? I'm going to close public input. And Mr. Drury, just to be clear, what we're doing now does not have a fiscal impact on the city, it's more setting goals for the city.
Yeah, these are broad goals for your city. And from that, your land development regulations will be implemented. And from that, you'll have a five-year capital plan, you'll be reviewing and approving, as you do every year. You'll have an annual budget that you decide. I mean, for this, for, you know, we know this year you adopted a budget that was 25% lower than last year. You made that decision to reduce the budget. You adopted a budget with a lower mileage rate. You adopted a mileage rate that's the lowest in five years. So every year, you, being fiscally conservative, look at the budget, look at the plan, and you decide that year based on economic conditions, based on affordability and what you want to do, you adopt that annual budget at that time. This is a comprehensive plan on what the future of your city will look like so that the public, who wants to build a building or owns land and wants to exercise their private property rights to do what they want with that land, knows how that should be compatible with the plans of the city.
Mr. Drury, does council have any questions? Mr. Singletary?
I just want to make a quick comment. I want to thank Kelly Horn for all their hard work. I appreciate what you said about the staff involvement. It's a lot of things that people don't see what goes on behind the scenes, but I know they've worked hard on this project. It's been very exciting to see it come to fruition. It's been nice to see all the community involvement, having all the residents come to the workshops and the stakeholders that have been involved. I'm just, I'm really excited and I'm anxious to hear what the state has to say. And I just want to, once again, thank you for everything you've done.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Do I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve a transmittal of the comprehensive plan of our passing to see what they're calling.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Which brings us to General Government, Tab 7, Community Grant Award. Ms. Novek.
Thank you, Mayor. The council budgeted $2,000 in the current fiscal year for community grant awards. The city advertised in October an invitation to submit community grant applications for area non-for-profit organizations with a 501(c)(3) designation brought to $500 in funding for community and social service projects. On January 15, 2020, the council awarded two grant applications in the amount of $500 each, resulting in a $1,000 remaining balance in budgeted community grant funds. On February 19, 2020, council moved to remove application deadlines from the community grant policy for grants to be awarded until funds are extinguished from the program. The city received a new grant application from Love Extensions, Inc., and the information in application was included in your general pack. A ranking committee consisting of the city clerk, finance director, and community services director met on August 27 to review the application for qualification and determine the application met criteria for the program. And it is up for your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Novek. Did we have any requests from the audience? Seeing no one from the public wanting to speak on this topic, I'm going to close public input. Council, do you have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve option one to award community grant amount of $500 to the application.
I'll second that. Yeah, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Love Extension. Which brings us to Tab 8, Extension of Interlocal Agreement with School Board for Joint Use of Facilities, Community Services. Mr. Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, for the past several years, we've had an agreement with Lake County School Board to use facilities. We let them use our facilities, they let us use their facilities. It's worked out well. It's an annual agreement that we're going to be setting up. What's before you today is just your approval to renew that for the next year. We have an agreement in front of you. It'll pretty much stay the same. We're just asking you, your blessings, to go ahead and sign off on another year for that.
Thank you, Mr. Aldrich. Mr. Drury?
No, I think you've covered it pretty well. It'll come back to you every year in case you, as a council, want to make any changes to it.
Did we have any requests from the audience to speak? Seeing no one wanting to speak from the audience, I'm going to close public input. Council, have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve option one.
You have a motion in a second? I want to say thank you for all your hard work doing that, because I know that we set up the softball field so much better now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to Tab 9, Extension of Negotiated Contract with Gator Sketch Corporation for the Architectural Design Services of the Public Works and Solid Waste Facility. Public Works, Mr. Dillon.
Favor, Mayor. On May 20, 2020, city council awarded the architectural design services for Gator Sketch Corporation for designing a new solid waste and public works operations facility and authorized staff to negotiate a contract. Staff negotiated a contract with architectural engineering services with Gator Sketch in the amount of $644,574, which represents 9.2% of the $7 million budget. As part of the contract negotiations, staff utilized the Design Professional Fee Guidelines with the Department of National Services, which reflects the current market conditions for architectural engineering services. The negotiated fee as well as within those guidelines. The contract covers architectural services, design engineering services, development and construction documents, and business applications, construction bid services, project management, construction management, construction oversight, procurement services for furnishings and equipment, audiovisual, information technology services. You had two options before you, to approve the negotiated CIAA contract with Gator Sketch Corporation for the architectural design services of the solid waste and public works operations facility in the amount of $644,574, or not so approved. Staff recommends to approve the negotiated CIAA contract. Fiscal impact of proposed design costs is in line with the solid waste budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public input. Council, do you have any questions?
I do, I've got a few. If we can look at page four, please. It says, "Geotechnical Engineering by Owner." Do we know what that expense is going to be?
We've worked with the phase one aspect of the environmental, which was required from E-Gate Ring, we sent a grant application for $2.2 million. The second phase will be up to the architect and help with the design and location, once we get that survey and so forth, we'll have a better understanding of costs.
Okay. Then also on page, on page three, it discusses, Mr. Drury being the contractual authority and you being the project manager. But then on the contract, it talks about two different people being the project manager, the architect of record, which is obviously expected. But why are we calling you project manager? With your license, I see conflict and all sorts of other issues.
And I didn't see that in our contract.
So...
So we're going to have you designated as owner's representative, and we'll remove the title of project manager.
Thank you. And one last thing I have on here is that with material costs going through the roof, lumber at 40-plus percent going up, I just want us to be really sensitive to that as this project gets designed, that if those costs continue, that we may need to bring this building down to a smaller size. Because that's a huge concern out there currently.
Absolutely. Will you give your evaluation or any...
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have, may I?
Council, have any other questions? All right, well, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion that we go with staff's recommendation of option one, please.
Sorry.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just one discussion. We just had mentioned that will be taken care of with the motion.
I believe so.
Yeah, we're going to design the building within the budget, and we're going to change the term of his title.
Any other comments or questions from council? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We leave that carries five to zero. Which brings us to new business. Is there any new business?
Good.
Mr. Singletary?
Yes. With November 11th being Veterans Day coming up, I would like to see if the city could do something to recognize veterans, if we could perhaps put up some...
The flags up?
Flags.
Yeah, the council would like us to put some flags on Main Street and the holders we have on the current, we can make that happen. Do you want it on the day of? Do you want it during the whole week? Does it...
I would rather have it the whole week.
All right. Very good. We'll do that.
What kind of cost of that? Sorry.
We're probably going to have to use our Fourth of July flags, and we'll use our staff to go ahead with the cherry picker and install them. So I think we can do it within our means. Good question.
Any other new business? All right, so we'll move on to old business. Any old business? All right, I see any old business. We'll move on to audience be heard. Have I received any requests from the audience? It looks like Mr. Yocum is running forward, so if you please say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Manchiyukam, 12619 Milwaukee. Just wanted to share with you, because I've been trying to hit other cities, and how are you there, county council, cut their, the fees that they get per meeting? In other words, they have to show up to get paid. And if they get, they were $250 each meeting, and they cut it in half to show some empathy with the rest of the community in this pandemic economic environment. And then I was at Mineola, they've rolled back their taxes below the rollback rate. They are, just approved a new fire station, and it was pay-as-you-go. They saved up the cash to pay for it. And then the architect was kind of complaining about, well, he couldn't put a tower in because of the budget, he couldn't do this because of the budget. And they just take the approach that they want to control costs for their residents. And I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward? Please come forward and say your full name and address, and we have three minutes.
Bullinda Rink, 216 Fern Avenue. Longtime resident, my very whole life. And we drive our golf carts. Two weeks ago, we came up, and I kind of wanted an update about what's going on with the violence and its various, and the shootings.
Thank you. Chief, I don't know if you're able to speak on all of the issues, but what you can, we would appreciate. I know that the webpage posts regularly what updates are.
The department is taking the approach towards the violence that's happening in the city. We have enhanced our patrol... We have enhanced our patrol. It's important to realize that we have a generally good handle on the people that are responsible for this. Our detectives, our road patrol is working diligently every day. We are meeting with the state attorney's office, and the investigations are actually moving forward at a pace that is good. I really can't get the details, as to be expected, but we are moving forward, and the areas, it's a smaller area that is experiencing these issues, the officers, if you live in that area, you'll notice a tremendous unprecedented presence of police officers during that time. And that's pretty much it. I feel that we have a pretty good handle on what the situation is, and I feel confident in the officers, they're working very hard and very proud of them, and keeping it under control. I will finally add that we are not the only city that's experiencing this. There was shootings in Iceberg, East Desa Mount Door, and we are working with the sheriff's office, we had a meeting last week with them, the other cities, to kind of get this wrapped up. But not specifically probably what you want to hear, but I will tell you that is, it's power number one in our department.
Is anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward? Please come forward, say your full name and address, and you have three minutes.
Kristi Carman, 204 North Watteman, Tewksbury. Just as a comment on, first of all, thank you for everything that the police are doing and the city is doing for our protection, and as a resident, it's noticeable. My question is, is as you address the stuff that you are able to discuss with the involvement of all the members of the city of Tewkesbury, is there a way that the residents have some sort of public knowledge, whether it's a website, to that type of interaction? That's all, thank you.
Chief?
Yes, I would strongly encourage, I don't know if you had a chance to look at our Facebook page or anything, but information that we can, we at least, we will put on the Facebook page. Also, if there's a specific question or concern, give us a call, ask to speak to one of the investigators working the case. And we might be able to get a little bit more deeper for you if we have a specific issue. But I strongly encourage everyone to look at our Facebook page, it's a fairly active page, and things that we can post, we will post on there. And we will be careful that when we do post, that we post accurately, because like any type of situation, it's very fluid, you know, two hours later, the whole thing will change, two hours later, it can change. So we'll be very careful what we post. But give us a call, and say, I want to speak to someone about the shootings, and I guarantee you, we will sit there and speak one-on-one, give you real detail. Thank you.
And Chief, I know that I'm aware of this, but when warrants are out, you try to keep them secret so people don't know that you're coming to give them, is that correct?
Yes, we don't, yeah, you know, let's say, let's say, pretend that there's, we have three or four warrants out there, okay? If you sit there and say, we're out there, you know, so, 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 next thing you know, it's actually, you know, we did it, it was motivated, so, yeah.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward? All right, I'm going to close, and we'll move on to reports. Mr. Drury?
Just a reminder that we have our budget here tomorrow at 5:05 here. Pretty excited about this year's budget. It's one of the most fiscally conservative budgets we've ever put together as a council. We began this process in January. You as a board worked hard, the publics worked hard, we've had great workshop, public input, and we have brought this budget down to kind of a record for fiscal conservancy, in my view, for a community like ours. Just some highlights, the proposed property tax rate is the lowest in five years. That says a lot. We're a growing city, lowest property tax rate in five years. Congratulations. The rate's been reduced two consecutive years in a row. The proposed debt service is the lowest tax rate in the last nine years. The rate has been reduced every year for the last eight years. The proposed city budget, recognizing, you know, everything that we need to do, was reduced 25% over the current year. Reserves appropriation was increased. We have a very stable government here, and we have a tax reduction program that is not reactionary or overreactionary. It is well thought out, thanks to you all and the budgets that you have done, and it allows our city to continue to provide the services of the public and the business community so depends on, in a stable and methodical way. There are some cities that may be having fiscal situations that are overreaction, and then the business community and the citizens feel that. What's nice about this city is we are a steady-as-shoes city. We're fiscally responsible, we lower the military, we lower the budget, in a methodical and systematic way. We don't gut and get rid of all of the services that our citizens and businesses so rely on. So we have a great budget workshop at 5:05 tomorrow, and I look forward to continuing to deliberate that fiscally conservative budget that you all are moving forward with. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Ms. Noda? I think you've been there. Chief? Mr. Aldrich?
Nothing, Mr. Drury.
Mr. Tweedy?
Yes, just wanted to give you all a brief update on Marina Seaplane. I thought it was long.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Just a brief update on the seaplane-based Marina reconstruction. As you know, the contracts and notes were issued back in March, our contract, our design and build firm has been hard at work, procuring all the materials, the subcontractors, and they will be mobilizing onsite here on the 14th of this month, so just less than two weeks from now. You know, I mentioned before, I think a project like this is a lot like an iceberg. Most of it is below the surface, and you can't see it. So when the iceberg arrives, it'll be about 30 to 40% complete as we speak. Dock sections and gangways and other materials are being fabricated offsite, and we'll be arriving, so you'll start to see construction trailers, fencing, and equipment coming onsite by the time we have our next meeting here, and it'll be moving forward very quickly, finishing up probably around the end of next year. So excited about that, it's a good news.
Thank you, Mr. Tweedy. I just want to stop again, I'd like to strike a note with everybody else. Mr. Dillon, do you have anything?
I do have one thing. Just as a reminder, we have 12 days, 19 hours, 1 minute, and 3 seconds to find out FDOT will award our $25 million project.
You're not keeping track of it. Well, it's very exciting. So hopefully my next meeting will...
Yes.
Mr. Pete? Mr. Clark?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Chief?
Nothing, Dad, everything.
Mr. Biggs?
Nothing, Mayor, just Mr. Garcia.
I was like, I don't know. We're done here, thank you. Ms. Wolf? All right, so council, we'll start with a quick review.
First, my thank you for the work your team did on the comp plan. It's a great template for the next 20 years, and it offers a lot of options as we grow. So thank you for that, that was no easy task. And secondly, Mr. Tweedy, thanks for putting us out in the news in a positive light with subject total out there. Really into town, and they make national news, and doing very well, so it's always exciting to see one of our businesses doing that on a national entry area in the line of life. And then lastly, a positive quote of the evening for today, "Quality is not an act, it's a habit," and that's by Aristotle. Thank you.
Speaking of sweeties, Mr. Sanders?
I don't have anything to add here.
All right. Mr. Stevenson?
Just one thing, Mr. Clark, I believe that was your phone I heard ringing.
Yes, sir.
I think you have to put a dollar in the jar now, sir.
Yes, sir.
Vice President?
Yeah, I'm going to see where we were on the golf cart crossing. I remember asking you all about it a few months ago to pursue that again, and I just want to see where we are in that.
We hired a firm to update the study for the crossing, Don Griffey Engineering, and they are updating the justifications needed for FDOT, and I think that's going to be done in a very couple of weeks.
I can check that.
Okay, I think it'll be done hopefully within two weeks. And then we put that in a cover letter, and that goes to District Five, and then that goes to Tallahassee, and then we bird-dog it through the whole process. And that means, you know, talking to our legislators, talking to them. So it's well on its way, and hopefully we'll have an answer, you know, in 60 days.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Well, with no further ado, this meeting is adjourned. Everybody, enjoy your evening.